Good morning. I'd like to call to order a special meeting for the Osage Minerals Council, November twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one. We just have a comment period today. The meeting specifically selected for the headright issue. And with that, I have just been told that we lost a dear friend this morning. And we also lost another dear friend in Gray Horse. These men were good men, and I want their families to know the Lords took them home. I'd like to ask Second Chair Red Eagle to open up with a prayer and acknowledge the loss to Mr. Arn and Mr. Pease and recognize that this is a hard time to go through it just for Thanksgiving and any time, but they have so many issues and only the Lord can take care of those. Brother, could you pray for us this morning?
Oh, wait there, Chairman. Tatsi, tatsi wakanda, wakande jinky. How it's sicko me, no, ba me ma, be de me. They come say hello, wakanda, wakande jinky. Waska, thou waska de wa, wa ja je de. Yeah, thou wakanda, ma ja di da de, wa ja je de, Osage minerals state. Nisa pi de wakanda, wakande jinky. Itto de wa ja je, howe, howe hoi de wa ja je, la de komba. Thank you, Father, for this beautiful day. Thank you for the seasons. Thank you for this meeting. And we're proceeding, proceeding the meeting here, Father. Give us strength, Father, and give us the ingenuity, intelligence, Father, and the fortitude to go, to go forward with this new enactment, Father. Give us strength, Father, and bless our United States Congress, Father, for the help and all these years that they've been behind us, Father, and helping us, Father, in one way or the other, Father. Again, I ask you to bless those that are breathing and breathing at this hour, Jeff Arn's family, his family, the Wood Peace, his family, Father, that passed on. Also de de wa ja je de, wakanda, wakande jinky. Wa ba de de, wa pa so de de. Again, Father, I thank you for the seasons that you graciously granted us, Father. Again, I ask you to bless those that are still all breathing at this hour, Father. Bless those that are not well. Bless this meeting, give us strength, Father, and bless our minds. And while the other, wakanda, wakande jinky, komba de, wa ja je. Give us strength, Father, to carry on our duties, Father, for the betterment of our people and betterment of our shareholders, Father. Again, I ask you to bless all those that are not well today, Father, bless our families. Give us strength today and bless the people that were behind this, the work that they done, Councilwoman Harland, Father, Brother Wilson Popestem, Father, bless them, their families, Father, for the work and the good, the good work that they've done, Fathers, and the time allotted that it took, Father, and it's about time that things were progressing in that way, Father. Again, I ask you to bless those that are here today. Give us strength. Yeah, we got Shannon, wakande jinky, Jesus. That keeps you the way we know the, wakanda, wakande jinky. Amen.
Amen. Real call, please.
Councilwoman Foreman. Councilwoman Gray. Here. Councilwoman Harland.
Here.
Councilwoman Redcorn.
Oxy, here.
Second Chair Red Eagle. Councilwoman Rebar. Chairman Waller.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. With that consideration, I'd like to go into the topic today. I'd like to ask Councilwoman Harland to start the meeting for us and finish it for us at this time. I'd like to turn the floor over to Councilwoman Harland and Mr. Popestem.
Thank you, Chairman. Each of you should have a copy of a, of a one-page summary of the issue that, if you'll recall, the council had allowed us the opportunity to work on the issue of returning headrights to our shareholders, to the minerals estate, to the nation. This is a real in-depth act, this nineteen-oh-six Act and all of its amendments, and it took us quite a while. And, you know, I want to say thank you to Mr. Popestem and to Abby for all the work that they did and, and for being patient with me as I worked through it. I certainly don't know the Act as well as they do, and, and, and I'm not the expert that they are, but, you know, they were, they were very patient in explaining things to me, and, and we were able to sit down and work through each amendment and take it apart, and that's what this required. So, the one-page summary is really where we are now and kind of how we got here. We tried to make it as concise as possible so that, you know, you didn't have to go through all of the amendments. We know that with the movie and the book, that many people have reached out and said, you know, we'd like to give our headright, our share back to the minerals council or to the nation, or return it to the Osage. And, and right now, as the Act stands, there's not a viable way for that to occur. There's about twenty-six percent of the headrights that are outside of the nation that belong to either entities or non-Osage individuals. And we know, as I said, that some folks would like to return those. So, what we did was we put together this summary sheet for you. I think one of the most important things, and I'm going to let Wilson tell us a little more about it, but the, one of the most important things to keep in mind is that when the nineteen-oh-six Act was passed, it was about individuals, right? It was about people, real people, two thousand two hundred and twenty-nine real people, our people. And somewhere along the line, about forty years later, it quit being about people and became about a property, property right. And we, you know, I, I want to tell you that we've had a lot of discussion about this and, and to us and to probably everybody sitting on this council, it's still people to us. It's still about the people. It's not about the property right, because I know that each and every one of us would love to have our, where we got our headrights from. We want those people back. I'd rather not have a headright and have my mom, right? And I know that's how everybody feels. We'd rather, we'd rather have those people back. And so, today, like I said, I'm, I'm going to let Wilson talk a little more about it, but today, I'm, I'm prepared to make a motion requesting that the chairman lead the direction on reaching out to our congressional leaders and moving forward on this project so that we can make a, make a inroad for these headrights to come back to the Osage. So, Wilson, if you can give a, a quick summary, that would be wonderful. I, I know, like I said, everybody has the, the document, but I, I think just an overview would be good.
Well, I appreciate your leadership, Councilwoman Harland, on this, and she's, I know you all know who she is, and in this process, she's been important to it and, you know, passionate about this in a really complicated area of law. So, we provide a summary that does, that sort of gets you to where you can understand that, hopefully anybody can understand the issue, and it's drafted in a way that you would provide this to a member of the U.S. Congress, you know, the U.S. House of Representatives or the U.S. Senate to try to educate them on, on what the issue is and why we, the Osage Minerals Council would like to see this changed. So, as Councilwoman Harland said, you know, the nineteen-oh-six Act refers to members of the Osage tribe, legal members. There was a role created, the Congress directed that a role be created, and that persons on that role would be the legal members of the Osage tribe. And the, those legal members would receive land allotments, two things, land allotments and the right to receive proceeds from the Osage minerals state. But, you know, if you think about what we call today a headright, the nineteen-oh-six Act did not call it a headright. It wasn't until nineteen forty-eight where the term headright was introduced into an amendment to the nineteen-oh-six Act. The nineteen-oh-six Act created a role of human beings, human, humans that were Osages, and those individuals had the right to receive the money. Then over time, as you recall, the nineteen-oh-six Act was meant to expire after twenty-five years. So, there's, the Secretary of the Interior had to deal with a situation where, you know, individual Osages were passing on, and who would receive that? And over time, the right of a legal member of the Osage tribe, a person to receive that head, that income became a property right that could be inherited or could be, you know, transferred from one person to another. So, that system has been in place. It's changed over the years in some ways. The existing law creates a way for, a pathway for a non-Osage to transfer that headright interest back to the tribe or, or the nation of the minerals council or an individual Osage, but it is so cumbersome that no one has even tried to do it, I believe, in over two decades. Right? So, you, I remember being at the headright, last headright auction, and, yeah, I can't remember what it went for, but just, you know, it was a whole lot of money, that auction, but it was over twenty years ago, I think, that auction. So, when we have people coming to the Osage Minerals Council saying, "I want to give this back to you. This belongs to you. Should have never come to us." They, they're not even allowed under federal law to do that. So, what this proposed plan that the minerals council asked me to consider today would create a, we'd have, we have to go to the U.S. Congress to change the law. And the law would, what we're recommending, create a market-based solution. So, you give non-Osage headright owners pathways to return this to the Osage Minerals Council, the Osage Nation, or Osage individuals by gift or purchase, right? You give them the power to transfer that back into Osage ownership. The Congress, when it created this tiered sale structure, it just caused, it was so cumbersome that nobody does it, right? It just, that is a failed system. So, if the, the goal here of the minerals council is to reacquire these, I will call them orphaned headrights, again, we think about this in terms of, these are human being people, then it became this property that has now become orphaned into the hands of twenty percent, twenty-six percent of them are orphaned into the hands of non-Osages. And if we're going to reclaim those, they have rights because those headright interests owned by non-Osages are federally protected. We, we don't have authority to just take them back. But if we give them market-based incentives to transfer them back or even, or to purchase them, then that's the most likely way that those transfers will begin. Now, the system we have now is, is terrible, right? I mean, the, a non-Indian right now, say, say it's a, you know, say it's a non-Indian person who lives in Kentucky, just as an example, and they own one headright. They can bequeath their headright. In other words, they can, they can go through probate or they can create a will, and they can give that headright interest to whoever they want to. They have no restrictions at all. The only ones that have restrictions are Osages. We are limited on who we can transfer our interest to. We can do an inter vivos trust, so when we're living, we can make that transfer. Or when we pass on, we can have a life estate to a non-Osage spouse, and then the children who are Osage can then inherit. But those restrictions are just on us. The non-Indians, the twenty-six percent, they have free rein to transfer those headrights at death to whoever they want to. So, that's the bad system we're in. If we take a cold look at where we are, what's happened to our people that were the, the legal members of the Osage tribe, Osage individuals, where we've come to today, it's kind of a pitiful thing when you look at it very closely, and it's a legal system that's failed us. And so, what we are, the proposal here today is to repatriate or rematriate or create a pathway for those orphaned headrights to come home. And unfortunately, we can't do it under our own sovereign authority. These are now, again, they're federally protected property rights. We have to create a legal pathway for that to happen. So, with that, it's a, I'll leave it there, and if there's any questions, we can.
Any questions? Chairman. Yeah, thank you, Chairman. And the question for Wilson is, you said that a non-Osage can transfer at death by will. Can they transfer prior to death?
No. So, the only way they can transfer prior to death is with this tiered sale system, right? So, the way the law works in this Byzantine bizarre world of Osage headrights is that the transfers can happen when you're living. If you're an Osage, you can have an inter vivos trust, right? You do that there. We have that authority. When we, when an Osage passes on, they have to transfer to another Osage, although somebody can have a life estate. A non-Osage is, does not have that restriction when they die. If they're living and they want to sell, they have, they have, or transfer, they have to go through this tiered process that nobody, nobody takes them up on that, right? So, that, that's what's a, a block to a rational decision, a rational economic actor to make a transfer back to the tribe or to an Osage or to the nation.
What is a tiered transfer? I don't quite understand the tiered transfer. And again, also too, I'd also like to know how a non-human can transfer this ownership as well.
So, non-humans, say it's a church, say, say it's OU or, or a church or, you know, so they, it's not clear to me how they would transfer theirs. I mean, unless they went through the same tiered process, right, through a sale, which again, is so cumbersome, nobody wants to do it.
And when you, when you suggest that we, that we go to Congress and, and get some procedures in place to do this, can we do it to where and would we want to do it in a way that it can only be transferred, sold or gifted to an Osage or to our mineral state or head, headright owners? In other words, can, can we limit it where they could not sell or gift it outside of us?
You know, that's a good question. My sense of that is, one, as a legal matter, I think that would be complicated because you're now limiting a federal property right. But second, as a practical political matter, I think you're not going to get our Oklahoma delegation to approve that if you're limiting what non-Osages can do with their property.
Even though it's the sole purpose of why we're even having to do this, if you're trying to get it back to our people and to just go create new legislation that creates a marketplace for our headrights, you would think that we would limit it. We, we wouldn't, we wouldn't include language that would, that would let it continue this day outside of the Osage controlling. It just, this seems.
No, and I, I think you're, I think that's a fair concern. I just worry that if we go to Jim Enhoff and James Langford, who will necessarily have to sign off on this, and non-Osage headright holders are saying, "Wait a second, you're going to, you're proposing legislation that's going to limit my rights that are now currently federally protected on who I can transfer to?" We're going to have a hard time getting, you know, getting that kind of approval, because you'd be asking Congress to then create a restriction on the authority of non-Osages. Now, maybe they would do that, but I'd feel more confident that in my dealings with this Oklahoma delegation, which I think we can, we can win this, we can get this done.
What about a right of course refusal?
You know, that, which is, I mean, we can think, that's, that's not a bad idea. Again, we can think about ways, but again, you're creating a restriction on them rather than just a market-based. So, if you're saying right now you have the right to transfer this, if you're a non-Indian individual, or you can sell it now, but only this tiered system, we're really focused on that living entity, the living non-Osage, right, and their ability to transfer. So, it would then say, when all this, you know, I don't know if you saw the Lisa Ling piece, I, I watched it last night, very emotional, you know. Chief Jim Gray did a good job. Eddie, my brother Eddie Shaw did a really good job. There, you know, there's going to be people who see that or impacted by it. But, but the more empowered you create the non-Osage to give it back, I think the better off, the better chance we're going to be that that's going to happen. Although, Councilman Rebar, I think you're raising good points, though, about how it should be. Now, built into this proposal is kind of the real critique of going into the United States Congress and what they're willing to do and not do.
Pauline has his hand up. Can't hear you, Amber.
Yes, Chair. I'd like to go to Councilman Redcorn and Councilwoman Gray.
Anika pa he, oe na de. Kistomai watanka de, ono, owa, oe na de. Uh, yato eke she komba. Mahi tanka nikashade wa ja nikashade ito pahare. Ko si ala.
Echo Ali Weber.
Rikka nikashade wa, ma ja de etse de. Akita de wa ja nikashade. Wa sho shede owa wa za niye. They come and say, ha de, mahi tanka de. Uh, ma ja, ma zeska etape de, wa ma de. I stanki nikashade mahi tanka edo ba de. Wa ma de stank. Ha. Ka don, zanzoli ya. Oh, no. Wa ja je iye de. Uh, wa kon se, wa la kon se de. Ka don, uh, nan se, uh, wa hehe dek sheba, pa, ka hea ne, wa la ka he. They come and say, ha de. Kistomai. And they, they'd say, de, uh, we de. Uh, mahi tanka de. Wa, ma zeska de, wa watanka eke she, broka a, se a. Iya ka she na kakonka ki eke she, komba. Kakuna.
Talika. I think that that last issue which we're talking about is what the federal government is obligated to. Brother, you'll have to translate this.
At this time, and I appreciate you giving me the chance to speak, our relationship with the Americans has been a long one. They fought in many areas, but a long time ago, they came to our people and asked for help. And they asked your people down there, and our, our Zanzoli people. And I heard this from these women that talked to me about, you know, these language elements. And I'm asking that we ask for all of it. This is ours, ours. These people, they, they have stealing in their heart. They've got stealing in their mindset. And they made an agreement with us, and your, our people carried it out to protect them on the Louisiana Purchase, and that's what we did. And we took a lot of bumps and hits for that. Wakan si de, uh, de je de, oh, ah, ah, oh, he, he told me that, your brother Andrew. We're sitting in a place where all these are supposed to take place. That's how Osages move. I've been told that's how, and I'm just privileged to just see it sometimes, just to glimmer. But I'm going to ask that we, we get all that back. It's ours. I would even go further. When the United States pushed their way into the Osage, they took everything. They took all this surface. And I think we got enough evidence to say they ripped us off. We didn't want it. It's in that book, Dennis Pecalaf. It's in there. Y'all that read, there was three votes, referendum votes. First one failed, second one failed, third one passed so we could break up this reservation. But in our hearts and in our, of our people that sit around and, and talk about these things and then pray in our Osage way, they, we, this thing belongs to us. And that's what I said. And I believe that, brother. I don't, I don't want to debate it. That, I just want y'all to know how I feel. This is our place. This is our home. And they say it's Cherokee. Well, we, you know, I don't believe that. We were here way, that's why the Osage names down there, the towns down out west or southeast. We got Osage terms that are, so, you know, we were down there way before America, they, America brought the Cherokees over here. They brought them in here, and they insisted that they survive. So, they fought along with them. So, and then the Osages, and they, they came to the Osages, they needed help. So, that's, so I just want y'all to know how I feel, that I'm sitting in a place where I can make this decision, and I don't want to go to Congress and ask for a little bit. We're going to go, we need to ask for the whole thing. They, they owe us some money. Our people are, are, they call me all the time, they can't even make their house payment. They can't even put gas in their car, and we own all this. So, you know, we need to get moving. That's the way I feel, Chairman. Thank you.
We're thankful. Thank you for those comments and also acknowledging some of the early groups. I happen to be next door to where that started, about the third meeting a month that I, I grew up with. And that, that was their comments, is that we, we need to look at the expansion of ownership of what we really own. With that, Councilwoman Gray.
Thank you, Chairman. And we mean na, nephew, for those powerful words. You know, like some of you, I watched, I watched that Lisa Ling piece, saw my brothers and saw relatives. You know, when we talk about the American history, I mean, this is our history. This is it. These documents, the way that Osage is uniquely set up, and I think even the graphics that I saw, you know, we know it, but now everyone knows it. Now, everyone is, in this next year, that spotlight's going to be on us. And it's not so much that it's honest, but it's that, it's the time with the right administration with, it's like everything's coming into place a hundred years later. The original document was a failed document for us. It allowed so much corruption. I mean, you all know my family's story and, and those stories of other Osage families, you know, from. I mean, you all know my family's story and, and those stories of other Osage families, you know, from all three districts. It's what caused us to split, for people to move away, fear. But those of us who are sitting around this table, you know, it's up to us. Here we are a hundred years later and, you know, we have an opportunity to do something. To do something that is, um, to right a wrong, and I, I have to concur. Let's go for, let's, let's make it to where this comes back to us. Um, I know that there is, um, as strongly as we can put this, um, because the injustice of it all, and then, you know, one of the other comments was self-determination. We're under that, we're under that, of the sovereign nation of the Osage Nation. But our lane is one that is this mineral state, that's us. And I know that, I heard some words the other day that, you know, it's the nation, this mineral state. The subsurface, the rights, the monetary, I believe it's us. Uh, I mean, this may be a difference of opinion, and I always will sit down and hear people out, but I have my opinion too. But I, I appreciate, um, Councilwoman Harland for you and, um, our legal team to go in there. And you, you listen to us and you hear what we say in our hearts and, and for us to have an opportunity to really get into, um, how to, how to right this wrong, I mean, a horrible wrong. I don't think it's any mistake that some of the people that are here on this council are here, welcome to put us in these places, to make us all come together to, and everything is, you know, through a pandemic and through everything, that we can sit here and we go into an executive session to really talk this out. Because I, I, I do like the tiered purchasing system, I think it's something that we need to, to really get into that part. And, um, I think that, uh, with, uh, where we are politically right now is, in the nation, is a good time to right this wrong. We have a president that happens to be listening to righting wrongs and especially with, um, Congress. And, I mean, Indian country has never seen this much money come into it, ever. But, you know, I, I just can't help but think of the people that we've lost in the past few days that, um, who worked in this industry, who were shareholders. And I think this is just so important that, you know, um, we continue to do this work. And this, this is something that has needed to be fixed for such a long time. And, um, I just, those are my comments, and I'll have more to say, Chairman, when we get to executive. Thank you.
I think Councilman Harland and my, um, second.
That's who I'm calling on next, Councilwoman Harland.
So, thank you, and, um, just to Tali, thank you so much. As they say, when you, when you talk in your language, that those, those old ones, they hear it and they understand it. And I'll agree with what Margo said about, this is a wrong that needs to be righted. And I think that we want to do everything we can, um, we want it all back. Obviously, we all do want it back, we want to correct this wrong that has gone on for, you know, since the forties when they changed this. You know, Wilson and I were having a conversation earlier and I said, you know, it's, it's unfortunate that in our history, we, we were treated like many other Plains tribes were, where we became, we didn't, we, we ceased being people and became a piece of property. And that's how, if, if we look at native history, that's how all history treated Indian people. And so, uh, first and foremost, thank you for Tali for those words. Now, I'm not, uh, fluent, but I understood enough to know where you were going there. And Margo, we, we do want to correct these wrongs and, and we want to go for as much as we can. But I think in the, at the end of the day, we have to be realistic to, maybe we only get a little bit now, but we never quit fighting, we never quit fighting for the return of all of this. So, I, I'm, I am optimistic, but I'm also cautious that, um, these are politicians we're dealing with. And they're not likely to give us everything, but I think we ask for it. I think we ask for it and, and we listen to what they're willing to go for. And we take as much as we can and we leave that door open to go for more. It, it's not always going to be Jim Inhofe, it's not always going to be, uh, Senator Langford. It, it, you know, things are going to change in the future and we're never going to quit fighting for this. It may not be these same seven people sitting here, um, but I don't think this is ever a fight that's going to go away. So, uh, I do agree, we, we should go for everything. And, um, I, I was prepared to make a motion, but it sounds like, uh, Councilwoman Gray is asking to go into executive. Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure, um, if there's something we need to go into executive to discuss further or not. But when you're ready, I'll make my motion.
Yeah, I would like to go into executive session, a couple statements.
We got the second chair.
Second chair has comments.
Got a comment, Chairman?
Yes, second chair, please.
Yeah, uh, wait me on, watch Ozzy, I'll bet you'd see him, watch Ozzy. You know, what's been said before, you know, uh, we've all been facing this for many, many years now. My, my, our, our fathers and grandfathers have all been on these councils. And it's, it's ironic that, that it boils down to this council and maybe it's meant to be, you know. But I was just wondering, uh, Council, uh, Wilson, uh, would it go, would, would it have to go to the United States Congress in the next session? Or would Senator Cole be a good advocate, you know, since he's a Chico Solider himself? As well as Senator Langford, you know, would that, that would be just my suggestion. And what would be the timeline, you know, uh, like, uh, Councilwoman Harland was saying? I, I can see a compromise somewhere down the road, you know, but, uh, how would that work and, uh, what, what would be our chances? Thank you.
So, you know, my thought is that it, it starts with Frank Lucas, he's our congressman. So the way the House of Representatives works, they're going to defer to the member who, you know, that represents the district, their district. So that's, that's, he's our congressman, Frank Lucas. And, you know, uh, when the Osages came to him with this, uh, I call it the Osage Sovereignty Act, reaffirmation of our right to determine our own membership in form of government. He was, um, ended up championing that bill, um, and if you recall, they had a hearing, it's unusual, had a field hearing. On the Osage Reservation over at that place owned by Williams, kind of down by Tulsa. Congressman Dale Killie and others came and they had a hearing on it. Osage Shareholders Association supported it, everybody, Jessica Moore Harjo, she supported it, you know, gave testimony. But then, when, once we got to the point where the House was, House passed it, it went to the Senate and, um, you know, the Senate's tougher, but both of the Oklahoma senators, as a practical matter, will have to agree to pass it, right? Then, um, uh, so, uh, in my mind, just as a strategic matter, starting with Frank Lucas, getting his support, getting cosponsorship from, say, Tom Cole, Mark Wayne Mullen, you know, the Oklahoma delegation, Sharice Davids, a Ho-Chunk woman from Kansas, uh, who's in the Congress. You know, key people in Indian affairs, both Republican and Democrat, because if you don't have support from both, in this environment, you're dead. Would be, you know, I think we're going to get a lot of support, depending on what it is. And it's all going to have to get worked through. And then, but I would suggest starting in the House, right? Houses, the House of Representatives is mob rule, right? Controlled by the Democrats, if they'll bring it to the floor and you can get fifty-one percent of the votes, fifty percent plus one, it'll pass. Senate is a different beast. On Indian bills, they don't debate Indian bills on the floor of the Senate, you typically have to get unanimous consent. But if we can get the consent of our two Oklahoma senators and if we have an advocate, Frank Lucas and Tom Cole, they're probably going to support it. So, uh, to me, that's the general pathway. The Biden administration, through Deborah Holland and Brian Newland, will have a voice in what the bill looks like. They'll have a voice on whether they support it, because certainly it involves the authorities of the Secretary of the Interior. So, uh, you know, non, our own Osage headright holders will have a voice in that federal political process if they choose to have one. That will matter to Frank Lucas. You know, what he said repeatedly and did with the Osage, with the Osage legislation is, I want, I want, I want to be supportive, but I, I represent other tribes and I try to be helpful. Then some flank of the tribe comes and attacks me when I'm just trying to be helpful. So we need to make sure that there's generally broad support within the tribe for this solution. And if there is, then, you know, I want to help. But, um, you know, non in, non Osage, you have, Osages who have headrights, they, they'll have a voice in this. It's a, you know, it's a federal political process. So, um, you know, my first recommendation is, House with Frank Lucas, convince him because he's necessary, no one's going to vote for it over the objection of the person within whom the district, you know, Osage Reservation lies. So we start with him, then we go to Langford, who's on the Senate Committee on Indian Affairs. And Inhofe generally defers to him on, on these things. But, you know, it's going to be a process of building support, creating allies, working together, uh, addressing concerns. And, uh, you know, then hopefully we'll get, you know, we'll, we'll get there. But I think there's a, you know, very realistic chance, depending on what that bill looks like, that we could get something through. Osages are going to be in the spotlight here. It's going to happen, whether we like it or not, whether we're ready for it or not. So, uh, we ought to try to get some positive things done as a result of that focus on what happened here. And, uh, so, um, so, anyway, that, that's just kind of generally the political process, but also informed by how it worked with the Osage Sovereignty Act.
I just want to have one comment for the council. One issue I see, and Councilwoman Harland's talking about a motion, if we keep the clarity down to this item of, of what the request is, just on a pathway for these to be brought back, if possible, I think that would not need an executive. We'd leave it to just that parameter. When you add in the other expansion of what we didn't get, remember, we're the trustee and, uh, we have the trustee. The federal government, these other individuals are not. And I, I want to say that Mr. Pipestone's covering the ground here that something simplistic will go so much farther. And then it allows the opening of the other request of what did, what did this lose? How much at twenty-six percent? My thought is, is that we need to find this out, because when the first headright left our hands, what law handled that? At any case, I'd like the resolution to be modified just to the subject at hand. And, uh, that's all I have. Councilwoman Harland, your hand up.
No, sir, I think that, uh, both Councilman Reeveard and Councilman Redcorn have their hands up. And then if I could make a motion after that, um, I think that we could wrap up.
Chairman.
Councilman Reeveard.
Sure, excuse me, Chairman, uh, excuse me, Chairman, uh.
Couple of things, one, I do agree that this might be good timing, uh, because of the attention brought to us by the, by the movie and, uh, recently the, the program that just aired. There might be some, I hate to use the word sympathy, but some, you know, some more good feelings towards us, having been wrong, uh, that maybe they're more inclined to hear us out and maybe have some rule, uh, whatever it is, uh, lean more towards our favor. I wonder, uh, if the House flips in 2022, uh, if that's more of an urgency for us to rush right now. Uh, because I don't know what that might look like, if it goes from Democrat to Republican, uh, which would be more favorable or if it really makes a difference. But so with that said, I want to go back to, uh, uh, back to receiving these headrights. If we prevail and we're able to purchase a headright or gift, have it gift to us, how do we receive it? Do we actually take it as it is? And what, I guess some of these are probably fractional headrights as well. But do we take it, uh, under the name of the Mineral Council? And the Mineral Council receives the revenue and utilizes the revenue, uh, for the benefit of all headright owners? Do we dissolve it to where we just, uh, throw it back into the pot to be redistributed with all the, the remaining surviving headrights? And, and just do away with it, kind of like, like I said, put, put it back in the pot? And if we were to purchase it, with what funds would we use to purchase it? Would that be, if, for us to use headright revenue today, I think we'd take an amendment to the Act of Congress, if I'm not mistaken. Because we're not allowed, I think all the revenue is supposed to be distributed. So I don't know that we would have the right to utilize any of the oil and gas revenue to use to purchase a headright, but if it's for the benefit of headright owners, would that be something to address in this bill that we would take to the United States Congress? Because how would we fund it, would we get permission to use as oil and gas revenue to purchase the headright now? Those are just a couple of thoughts I had, and with that, I'll, I'll, that's all I have for now, thank you.
I do have one short comment on the validity of the headright. It, it has to stay in its identity, number one. The headright and share would go either route, either to the PL accounts or administrated through the Osage Minerals Council. And I, but I believe this is the criteria that's going to be coming up once the bill is introduced and what is our respondent to it. The rest of it is great question. Council, uh, Mr. Councilman Redcorn.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I, I, I think our counsel, Mr. Pipestone, had a comment, mine's real quick, so.
Yes, sir.
I may, I'll just say it. I'd like our legal team to recall, I've got three fingers up, if you can't read that, my fingers are getting old. I want y'all to remember three dates, if I'm, if you, if you could. Eighteen oh six is when Lieutenant Zeblin Montgomery Pike came to the Osage and asked for help. Because they just purchased the Louisiana Purchase and they were looking for allies to help protect that investment. A hundred years later, we all know is the nineteen oh six act. And then a hundred years after that is two thousand and six, which is when we started our new government under the Constitution of the Osage. So, I think our friends in Washington need to realize, we've got a, that's two hundred years of, of interaction, legal interaction with the United States. And I would just want them to know where, you know, we're active people for two hundred years, involved in the negotiation and the process for whatever they were doing in, in DC to, uh, lay out the path of the Osage. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, I, I've several questions in there. One, does the House flipping from Democratic control to Republican control matter? Uh, and I, one, I think it's likely the House is going to flip to Republican control, first of all. But I think in this circumstance, it doesn't matter, and here's why. The war between Republicans and Democrats over almost everything, that's not going to change, right? It's going to be a close, you know, there's going to be close, um, numbers on each side. But beneath that warfare, business gets done. As long as you have bipartisan support, when I say bipartisan, meaning Republicans and Democrats support, right? So, again, even in a Democratic-controlled House of where we are now, Frank Lucas is the main person, right? And so, um, if it turns into Kevin McCarthy is the new speaker, I think it will not make a difference. It's just the same. We have to stay beneath that warfare in the place where business gets done. And I don't see this kind of bill, this is not about gun control or abortion or, you know, climate change or oil. This is about, you know, a, a righting a wrong and creating pathway to a more equitable Osage existence, really. I mean, this is, we're talking about people here. And so, um, I think it's a good question. The Senate could flip too, right? I mean, all those things matter, but the first thing is that I think that we got to, we have to stay beneath the politics of the day. That's, that's a raging war and be where business gets done and those things do happen.
I was also meant to say, and I, and let me interrupt just a little time. I also would like to know if somebody was opposed to it, why would they be opposed? I mean, do you, would you anticipate any, any opposition to this request that we'll be making to Congress? And if so, why? What, what, what would any Congressperson's reason be for not approving what we're requesting?
Well, I think what we proposed in our, in the one-page, you know, Councilman Harland's work with us, I think it's hard to oppose. Now, I will say there could be Osages that say, I oppose because I think it should only go back to the family who lost it. Or I think it should only go to the Osage Nation. Right? That's the kind of thing that could emerge. Now, ultimately, I think in a debate over that, once you get into it, I think that's, that ends up just nothing happening, right? It ends up in a status quo where we're not going to have, see any change. But again, the non Osages who have these, unfortunately. And by the way, this was litigated in this Fletcher two or three, whatever it is. That's, that was the initial purpose of the lawsuit brought by, you know, Amanda Proctor and Jason Almont was to try to get those headrights back to say the Secretary of the Interior never had authority to allow non Osages to get those. They lost. Right? They lost. And, uh, so we're, that's why we're back to Congress here. And so, uh, I think, you know, we could have opposition emerge from places that we don't expect. But that's why I think the Minerals Council leadership has to kind of be ready for that. All right, we're going to, when it comes, we're going to deal with it. When the next challenge comes, we're going to deal with it. Uh, you know, one of the things that, and, and we have to listen to our own people too. I mean, when the, the Osage Sovereignty Act, that process came along, there were Osages that said, I'm very concerned that membership, this, this sovereign authority over membership in form of government means the Osage Nation is going to try to take my headright away. And that was not true, but we changed the draft of the law to make it crystal clear that cannot happen. But that became as the result of listening to people, right? So, and then Frank Lucas liked it too, because it gave him comfort on those who were communicating with his office. So, I mean, those things, I think it's, um, when you've got so much history here, um, that you just don't, it's hard to know exactly who could come out of the woodwork and say, I think there's, I disagree with this. And I think that, uh, what Councilman Redcorn's saying, I think, uh, about those dates, we, we're going to have to go, you're going to have to go, I'll go with you if you want me to, to tell our story. I mean, this isn't just about a little story about a technical change on headrights. We will need, uh, you know, I will encourage you to tell our story of who we are, where we came from, how we did up at this place and why we're asked, what we're asking for makes sense. And, you know, we're going to know this, I believe, uh, 10 times better than anybody else who comes to have a question. I believe that right now. It's a, this is, even though this summary is relatively simple, complicated area of law. Complicated. And Osages are under different other tribes, you know, so this notion of a headright and all that, it's, it's imbued with humanity and property and history and back and forth on amendments to the 1906 Act. And so, um, all that has policy and political implications. So I would just say, we've got to get started though. We've got to get started and then take things as they come along and deal with them and adjust and be, you know, either say, no, that's contrary to our principles, we're not going to do it. Or, and fight for it, or we say, okay, that's something we could, you know, do to get support and to get through the process. But that's sort of the nature of that process.
Councilwoman Foreman.
Councilmember, uh, Harland had her hand up first, so I'll, I'll defer to her.
Thank you, Councilwoman Harland.
Um, so I'm, I'm ready to make the motion, but, um, I, I wanted to say when Councilman Rebar was asking about how it is that we would hold this. Understand that once the headrights or once the shares are divided up, they change their legal character, right? When it comes to you, when you get your portion of your headright, it changes its legal character. So those kinds of things, those are legal questions that we'll address, but I just, I, I, you know, you were saying, how can we hold it if somebody were to give it back to us? It will have changed its legal character by then. Um, and I, and I believe that we will not be prohibited. Um, Mr. Chairman, I will go ahead and defer back to Councilwoman Foreman, but as soon as she's done, I'd like to make the motion. Um, so we can move on.
Thank you. Councilwoman Foreman, before we.
Thank you very much, and I apologize, uh, for being late. I, I thought this meeting was at 11:00. So I will have, uh, I'll catch up later, but I did want to at least put some input in there. And if you guys have already discussed this, it's not necessary to continue to discuss it. But my concerns after reading what was given us was, um, first of all, selling, uh, to an individual, um, selling, uh, a headright by a non Osage to an individual Osage gives unfair political advantage. So I hope that that was a consideration. Uh, if someone who has more means to buy, um, to buy a headright, uh, that gives them a full vote. And, uh, that is a concern of mine because that, you know, cuts out fairness, I think. Um, and then, uh, and you may have already talked about this, but, uh, on the other two, um, items, giving, uh, gifting or selling a headright to the nation or gifting or selling a headright to the, um, uh, to the OMC, um, there needs to be a provision of what, uh, happens to that money once it's gifted and given and are, is there, and then one last thing, is there any consideration for doing the title work to try to find the original family that lost or sold, uh, the, um, headright?
Chairman, I'm glad to address those.
Yes, please.
Yeah. So on the first question of unfair political advantage, right? So if you allow, you know, with the proposal is to allow a non Osage to gift or sell a headright interest to an Osage individual, right? Um, and that could create a political advantage or disadvantage. Now, my thought is that it happens all the time, right? I mean, if you have a parent that's got a full headright and they decide, you know, Elonpa gets it all and there's four of the children, that means that that may be inequitable in the mind of someone. With this though, if we're trying to, and I, I'll, I'll use this term earlier, and I, I do so with approval of Councilman Foreman. We're talking about going from a Osage human to property. We are trying to recapture orphaned headrights. And if non Osage, Osages don't have flexibility in how they transfer those back, my prediction is they're going to do it. Right? So they could give it to, gift it to the nation or OMC and, 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 but if, if they have more authority to gift it to an Osage person, there's more likelihood that just based on market forces that it's going to get back to an Osage. Now that could have some impact on political rights. If somebody gets a, you know, it has a quarter of a headright now and gets a half, that's, that's real, but to me, that's a lesser consideration in my view, and that's why I suggested, um, of actually getting it back, right? Because nothing is working on getting them back at this point, nothing. We now have, we have several decades worth of data on how to do that. We have the Fletcher three or two, whatever one it is, four, five, I don't know which one lawsuit that they lost. That said, the secretary had authority to allow non Osages to get it. We had the settlement where we said, we'll send a letter to all the non Osages and let them use, you can make offers to them and hardly anything came in, right? Uh, we have this tiered system in place now that's nobody utilized, no one's utilized for over two decades. So we have a legal infrastructure problem on how that transfers occur. Now, the more restriction you put around that, the less likelihood there's going to be transfers back into some Osage to, to, to an Osage person, the nation or otherwise. That's just my thought on, again, that is, I, I think what you raise is a, uh, is a, is a question that, you know, is, is a fair question, right? A person who purchased a headright is going to have a little bit more vote, right? But I don't, I, I would respectfully disagree with you that that's inequitable because it, it's just the nature of how things have gone for over a hundred years. Those, the way, uh, transfers have occurred is not based upon some equitable system. It's about whatever the owner wants to do, right? If, if, if me is a, you know, I've got three kids or four kids, if I said, I just want half of them to get it because they're more likely to take care of them. That's, that's not about equity and it's just about how I choose to deal with my property. And this would be the same as that. Um, now the title work to find the original family, um, I think that's a good question too. That's kind of what the tiered system that isn't working gets to though, right? If you look at those tiers, it tries to focus on, okay, first it's, let's go to the original Lattes family, then the first generation, then on from there. Then ultimately the Osage Tribe of Indians gets a, the last chance. None of that's working. It takes a power out of the hands of the non Osage headright owner to do what he, she or it wants to do with it. So, um, so th- those are my, that, I'm just telling you about my thinking. This Minerals Council can decide where it wants to go, what it wants to do, but that is my thinking on why if you create a market-based solution, you're more likely to get transfers back to us, the collective Osage us, OMC, Osage Nation or Osage Individual. Cause you may say, because if you say we did the title work and turns out that the Kirk family, that belonged to Wilson Kirk, that's my, had to be my great grandparent. The owner may say, I don't want them, I don't want to transfer it back to them. So I'm just not going to do it, right? I don't like them or, you know, whatever. So, um, Catherine Pearson has one, she wants transfer, it's not going to go, I'm just kidding. But, um, uh, but you know what I mean? That's why I'm saying market forces create more opportunity that non Osages will actually transfer. And that's what my thought, if the goal is to repatriate or rematriate or get to those back into Osage hands, get those orphaned headrights back into the hands of an Osage of some definition. To me, the market-based forces are, are better than trying to tell them what they can and can't do and hopefully just do it because nothing's worked so far.
May I respond?
Yes.
Um, you know, uh, we're all on board with getting those headrights back. That's, that goes without saying that they need to come back. Um, you will get 110% agreement from me there, but, um, on the title work, you know, probably the reason that has, has never worked for a landowner to go through this tiered process is because they'd have to pay for the title work to figure it out. So it's not surprising to me at all that they wouldn't want to go to that expense to try to sell their headright when they're getting revenue off of it and enjoying the benefits of it. So I'm not sure, you know, I'm going to have to disagree, um, on, partially on why the current, um, avenue of action has failed. Uh, I think it, you know, there's no incentive to do it if you have to spend a bunch of money to do the title work and figure out, you know, who owns, you know, who owned it in four gen, you know, four generations ago. So, um, and as far as the, um, equity question, i- if I may, just really quick, let me just get this in. Uh, as far as the equity question goes, uh, why not make it right now? Why, why do things? Just because that's the way it's always been done. Um, I, I will have to respectfully disagree with you on that too. I, you know, I like the idea of market-based to get things moving and get things done, but, uh, if it hasn't been fair in the past, maybe we should try to do something to make it fair. And I don't think that would hold up this at all. I just think it's worthy of discussion. So, uh, that's really all I have to say.
Chairman, if I could respond, I mean, to me, those are, uh, those are reasonable, fair comments and I appreciate them. But keep in mind, there is no title work here. We're talking about human beings. Right? This isn't land. This is not land title. This is individual owners, right? So this is not titled, uh, in the terms of land. This is, it is before we, we talked about this in the earlier part of the meeting. But the term of headright doesn't show up in, in a Osage, in 1906 Act Amendment till 1948. We're talking about human beings here. They were legal members that had the right to receive the money. Over time, that became property. And so, uh, in this circumstance, I don't think a person has to do the title work if they want to sell. The BIA does. We don't have those records. That is a BIA question. So if some entity came forward and said, hey, I want to sell this. I think they go to the BIA and, you know, the BIA controls this unfortunately. And they say, okay, first of all, you have to, we have to figure out from where you received your headright. So then they determine that. Then they say, okay, if you want to sell it, here's who you have to go to first. Now those, there's nobody that exists there or then, then let's go to the next tier. Then here's who you can sell it to this time. Okay? And if they don't buy it, then you're down to auction and all that, right? So that's why, um, I think it's, it's the BIA that has all the documents on this. Now, I have no idea about the, the condition of those documents or if you said with any Osage headright, they know who the original Alati that, that, uh, uh, who was the person who was the original owner of the headright. Uh, but I don't know how good those records are. But, um, I think the BIA does all that.
You have to interject one thought though, is that remember this transfer either by hook or crook was made by the family. I, I asked for the resolution today to be the encumbrance by the Osage Minerals Council. Once you throw in this individual Osage, we're not going to get it through. Or there is some other issues and you are correct, but I, I feel like this first step is the route in which one is possible to come back to us. The measure then will be, do we put it in the PL account? Do we administrate it? Remember it's a purchase now, but once it comes back to us, we have a few options available. Uh, that's all I've got. Councilwoman Harley.
So, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion at this time that, uh, the chairman be authorized to direct the work to begin on returning the Osage headrights, uh, to the Osage.
I second it.
Whether that be Osage people in, uh, individuals, Osage Minerals Estate, Council or, um, the nation. So the motion is simply that the chairman be authorized to direct the work to begin on returning Osage headrights. Um, and with that, I will also say that each step of the way, I will keep coming to council and giving you an update of what we're doing.
I second the motion.
I have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Harley, seconded by Councilwoman Gray. Discussion?
I just have one comment. I had my hand up earlier. Um, my only comment is, and I'll of course be in favor of doing this, but I believe that this is a process. And the other thing is, this is blood money. Then when the ones that went out and when they were took, as you said, Chairman, by hook or crook, this is. this is blood money that needs to come back to the nation. We know that, that there's going to be some people that don't know the whole story, how they even got it. It was probably just willed to them through their families. And not knowing that history of a hundred years ago, I think that, um, who wants to have that and receive the benefit from it?
Thank you.
So I believe that this is, uh, beginning the process of returning and how they will be done. So, um, I'll be put in favor. Thank you.
Chairman, call for a question.
Call for a question.
Councilwoman Harley. Councilwoman Harley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Foreman.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gray.
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn.
Yes.
Second chair, Red Eagle.
Yes.
Councilman Rebar. Councilman Rebar.
Yes.
Chairman Waller.
Yes.
Motion passes.
And thank you. I, Councilwoman Harley.
I just want to say thank you to the council for being supportive of this. Uh, I know there's lots of questions we're gonna work out as we go along. Um, but like I said, just to, in response to, uh, Councilman Redcorn is that we gotta, we gotta run through that door while we can and we gotta take as much as we can. And, and, and then, you know, it's, I think both, uh, well, everybody on this council, but both Wilson and I understand we gotta leave a gap in that door to move forward in the future because realistically, we may not get everything we want right now. But we're gonna make sure that there's a door that we can run through as we keep proceeding. So I thank everybody for supporting this and, and we are ready to roll up our sleeves and get going.
I, I think with that comment, I'd like to, uh, we don't need an executive. I'd like to entertain a motion adjourned.
I'm moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Second, I have a motion by Councilwoman Harley, and second by Councilwoman Foreman. Call for the question.
Councilwoman Gray. Councilwoman Gray.
You're on mute, Margo.
Councilwoman Gray. Councilwoman Harley. Councilwoman Harley.
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn.
Yes.
Second chair, Red Eagle.
Yes.
Councilman Rebar.
Yes.
Chairman Waller.
Yes.
Councilwoman Foreman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion is passed, adjourned. Thank you all. Have your holiday season. And I want to reach out to Jackie. I, I just can't tell you how hurt we are. And I'll be going over to Grey Horse this evening and tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you.